Good evening, here's Juan and welcome to the LEED Women Voters Forum. My name is Linda Langston and I'm with the LEED Women Voters. The LEED is a not-for-profit volunteer political organization with which we either support nor oppose any candidate or any political party. The LEED encourages citizen participation in government and it's open to anyone 16 years and older. We very much appreciate all the co-students that have joined us this evening. This forum is part of our voter education efforts to help voters make informed decisions at the upcoming elections. We hope that over the course of this program you will learn more about the candidates and what they hope to do for our city. This evening, I want to welcome candidates for District Two in the city of Cedar Rapids. We have Sophia Mahappy and Scott O'Leary. Both of them. I'll start by explaining some of the procedures for the forum, which each of these candidates have received ahead of time. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement and two minutes to answer each question. Opening and closing statements will be done in the following order. We'll start with Sophia and Scott will go second. The timekeeper is sitting in the front row. We have a couple of folks over there. And when there is a half a minute left on your speaking time, the timekeeper will hold up the card that says 30 seconds and in 15 seconds, the timekeeper will hold up a card that says 15 seconds. So please wrap up when you see the 15-second sign, so if you don't get to the stop sign, you are wrapped up. If you continue speaking after the stop sign, I will say thank you and we'll move on. I'll try to be better than some of the debates we've seen this year on TV. So candidates will confine their statements and responses to relevant issues and refrain from personal attacks. This forum is being recorded by Robin Cash of Neighborhood Network News and will be available to watch at the leedwomenvoters.org and at www.neighborhoodnetworknews.com website. So Pro Video is also live streaming this event at the Pro Video Productions Facebook page. Our LEED will also tweet the information and have the link to all of this on the LEED's Facebook page as well. I would ask that you all silence your cellphones. I was hated when I get embarrassed when it's mine goes off. If, and so actually I should make sure that breaks out. It is actually unsilent, but I've been known to miss that now. We request that you treat all of the candidates fairly and if at any time you cannot hear me or the candidates, please raise your hand and let us know. We'll do our best to adjust the microphones. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. We ask that there be no clapping, cheering, or calling out, with the exception that after their closing statements, we would invite you to clap for all candidates if you wish. You are encouraged to submit questions to the candidates on the provided pieces of paper. Questions must be addressed to all candidates, must apply to all the issues or qualifications for their particular office. Raise your hand if you would like another piece of paper or have your question collected. This evening, just in order to be mindful, I will go through the questions when this forum is done because we have another one right after it. And if there are questions that were asked that pertain to the next forum, we'll actually use those again, thereby saving the trouble of writing down more questions. So we have a LEED panel up here that is going to review your questions for legibility, clarity, and applicability to all candidates. I'll read as many questions as time allows, sometimes combining similar questions striving to cover a variety of topics. So we're going to start with the candidates and Sophia, we'll start with you with your opening statement.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. My name is Sophia Mahappy. I've lived here in Cedar Rapids for about 14 years. I arrived here with two small children, $37, and a Honda hatchback. I have, in the amount of time that I've been in Cedar Rapids, been overwhelmed with the way that this community made changing the trajectory of my family's lives possible. Because of that, I was driven to work in service to the community when I finished my college education. I have done that by working for Horizons, a family service alliance, for about the last four years. I oversee Meals on Wheels for five counties, as well as other programming related to food insecurity and poverty. I also serve on some nonprofit boards related to economic development, homelessness, and closing the educational achievement gap for students of color. And I currently serve on the Lindmar School Board, which will wrap in November. Thank you very much for having me here. I want to say thank you to the LEED. I feel honored to be part of this and honored to be running for city council. Thank you.
Scott?
Thank you for having the forum tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. Cedar Rapids is a great city to live, work, and play. I think everyone in this room probably thinks that. And the best thing about Cedar Rapids is the people. They care about their families, their neighbors, their neighborhoods, their schools, recreational activities, and so on. But most of all, they care about their town. This is what makes Cedar Rapids very special. In my brief time on the city council, I have seen this firsthand, over and over again, in neighborhood meetings, groundbreakings, project dedications, community events, festivals, and many others. The best part of serving on the city council is you get to learn more about the community than you would have ever hoped for. Cedar Rapids people answer the call and make their community better every day. The hard part about serving on the council is getting big things done. You must have an idea and you must have the ability to get people coordinated so that you can get things done on the city council. There's no substitute for strong leadership that's persuasive, passionate, and persistent. I've always called that the three Ps, drilled that into my kids. But not every big idea comes to pass, but nothing worthwhile gets done without the three Ps and leadership to steward it along. I believe I have focused my time on council, on getting big things done, and I look forward to telling you more about that tonight.
Thank you both. Tonight's first question is in relationship to diversity. How are you planning to support the growing diversity in Cedar Rapids? And there's also another question that particularly focuses on the Latin community in your district. Scott, would you take that first, please?
Sure. I think one of the great things about Cedar Rapids is that over the last 100 years, really probably most of the history of Cedar Rapids, there have been groups of people that have come to make Cedar Rapids their home. I would use my wife as an example. She comes from a Lebanese background and back in the late 19th century, early 20th century, the Lebanese peoples made Cedar Rapids their home, both Christian and Muslim. But more recently, we're seeing more and more diversity in our community. I think this Newbo market area is a good example of that, and I think it's extremely beneficial to our community. But one of the things that is really important is as people come to live here, whether it's the folks coming from Africa, for example, or Latinos coming from other places in the United States, they have to have places to live that are affordable, that allow them to make it in America. And my main goal in my first term was the Neighborhood Finance Corporation, which helps people buy homes in the core of our neighborhoods. And these are affordable houses. And NFC just celebrated its one-year anniversary. And essentially what NFC does is it provides an incentive for people to buy in our great core neighborhoods and get up to a $10,000 forgivable second mortgage. And this helps new families achieve the goal of homeownership and be able to move into our great neighborhoods that are close to schools, that are close to the grocery store, close to the hospitals, close to the urgent cares, and as well as other shopping and important items. And so as we move along with our growing population, we need to have abilities for people to be able to move into areas that they can afford.
Thank you. Sophia?
Diversity is probably for obvious reasons incredibly important to me as well. This is something I've had the opportunity to work on even externally to the city council through programs like SNAP at the Market, which was a program designed to create greater access to farmers markets for individuals who rely on SNAP benefits to supplement their food income through events that I've taken part in, like Black Labor of Love, which draws awareness and attention to issues of maternal health disparities for women of color by being involved in the board for Newbo City Market, which offers economic opportunities for individuals to start a business who may face barriers to doing that, as well as being involved in partnership with the Cedar Rapids Entrepreneurial Program, which is focused on some similar efforts. I think it's incredibly important that we are mindful of the needs of diverse members of this community. That would include issues related to people who have disabilities and need access to the same amenities that the rest of us in this community need, transportation, access to sidewalks that work for them. I hope to continue listening to constituents, finding out about issues that are important to them, and working to ensure this is a city that works for everyone here.
Thank you. The next question refers to retail businesses and notes that with both malls losing some stores, what thoughts do you have on trying to keep retail sales in the community? And Sophia, if you want to go first on that one, please?
I actually had this come up recently when I was out canvassing. I had someone on the far northeast corner of town and I said, you know, what's the issue that's really front of mind for you? And she said, you know, I was really sad to see Westdale not really come to fruition in the way that I had hoped that it would. Retail is incredibly important to our community. It's important that we have access to retail stores and that entrepreneurs who hope to have those retail stores here are able to survive and thrive in this community. I really think that it's important for us to be really considerate and mindful when we are undertaking construction and roads projects, that we are not blocking access to businesses, that it's clearly marked how people can get there so that those businesses don't suffer for the events or for the construction projects that we have going on in town.
Great. Thank you, Scott.
The retail world is changing dramatically from where it was 10 years ago, whether it's in Cedar Rapids or other places around the country. Back when, go back to the 1960s and 70s when malls were taking away the business from the downtown areas all over the nation, including Cedar Rapids. Now it's the reverse of that, where the malls are on the receiving end of the changes. And we've seen hundreds of malls all over the United States go into decline or completely closed, some of which have been redeveloped into other uses, some of which have simply been torn down. In the Cedar Rapids area, the Westdale situation was in decline for a long time, long before I got on the city council. And we've seen a partial redevelopment there, but the shift has changed a little bit. Originally, there wasn't going to be a hotel as part of that development. Originally, there wasn't going to be apartment living as part of that project, as well as some of the other things that are out there. But I think in the long term, most likely as business goes, there are going to be winners in the retail world and there's going to be losers. And we've seen a lot of the different stores, chains around the country that have completely closed. But I think one of the positive things coming out of it is just like in Newbo here, individuals are opening up more specialized retail businesses that are helping revitalize areas such as Newbo and downtown Marion, even though we're not talking about Marion tonight, and other places in Cedar Rapids. And so the face of retail is changing. Probably the commodity type things are going to continue to be through Amazon and things of that nature. You can get your groceries delivered today and so on. But I think in the long run, retail is going to change, just like things do change, and it's important for Cedar Rapids people to support your local retailer, come down here and eat dinner, come down here and visit the bike shop and things, and support their local owners.
Thank you, Scott. We'll start with you on this one, and this is in regards to paying for progress. Do you think we need to extend the sales tax to do more work on roads?
Absolutely. In the last, we're in the sixth year of PFP, as I call it, and we have spent over $100 million on road projects in the first five years, which is twice as much money as was spent in the previous 10 years. And just as Sophia mentioned with road closures and detours and things around the city, that's a little bit of the price we're paying to try to get caught up. It's estimated that it would take $50 million of spending a year to get all the streets in Cedar Rapids up to standard within a 10-year time period. Well, we don't have $50 million a year, we're spending $22 million a year. And as a result of that, as we get towards the 2024 time period, when the tax will need to be renewed to continue this progress, and incidentally, it's a sales tax, so only about 60% of it is paid by people in Cedar Rapids, the rest are the people that are visiting Cedar Rapids, we need to do it for another 10 years so that we can continue to spend roughly $22 million a year to work towards getting caught up. And the thing I hear from residents is, is that we are spending, we're starting to see the impact where initially it was a lot of the arterial streets, now it's more and more the residential streets. And some of these residential streets haven't been touched in decades. And so as we go along, the PFP, I think, is an extremely important component in order to get our streets where they need to be without bonding, without interest payments. And I fully support renewal of the PFP.
Thank you, Sophia.
As someone whose daily driver is an early 90s Chevy truck with a rough suspension, I would have to agree, our roads need some attention. And this issue has come up more than any other when I'm asking people, what's important to you, what's front of mind for you? It's roads every time. Roads are incredibly important, transportation is incredibly important. We have to take care of the community that we have so that we have access to the things that they need.
Thank you. Next question is regarding the library. And Sophia, if you will take this first, would you support a referendum to increase the library levy?
There is a phenomenal book called Palaces for the People that talks about libraries as sort of the last real stronghold for building communities that is accessible to all people. The library is an incredibly important place for everyone in our community, and I support funding the library fully.
Scott?
One of the cool things that's come out of the library in the last few years, several years ago when the levy expired and therefore they had no levy at all, the trustees and library board fully examined their entire situation and made some changes. And unfortunately, one of those changes were closing certain days on both branches. But I'm happy to report today is that the city of Cedar Rapids has gradually increased funding and the changes made have resulted in long-term savings. And all of those hours have been restored. And I think the library is one of the most important assets we have in Cedar Rapids because anybody can go there, it's free. And every time I go to the library, I go upstairs and I look at the computers and they are always at least half utilized and oftentimes, I don't know that there's even one available. And I see the library as being the great equalizer because everybody can come up there and use the computers, for example, and they have staff to help people. They've helped people find jobs, they've helped people fix other issues that they have in their lives. And it's, whether it be in the downtown library or the LAD library, it's extremely important for our community. As far as a levy goes, if the library board were to propose that a levy go on the ballot, I would support it, but right now, I don't think that's in their plans. So I would support it if they put it out there, but right now, I don't think they have any plans to ask for a levy.
Thank you, Scott. And you'll go first on this next question. So the questioner notes that in your next term, whoever is successful, it is likely that a discussion about the ownership of the Doubletree will come up. What are your thoughts on retaining the city's ownership of the hotel or selling the hotel?
That's a very good question. I sit on the, as chairman of the finance committee, I go to the monthly called P and L meeting where we get a total review of what's going on at the hotel, the arena, as well as the convention center. And if we go back to 2012, 2013, when we had a derelict building that was in terrible shape, basically was either closed or darn close to it, what's happened when the city took that over back during, when Ron Corbett was mayor, I see him sitting in the back, was nothing short of miraculous. And I don't think we could have had the downtown resurgence without having a solid hotel. Without the Doubletree Hotel, we'd have no hotel at all. But what I can tell you today is that hotels never lost money. It totally funds the debt payments that it uses for those bonds issued back in 2010 and 11. And right now, the hotel is doing extremely well, the best it's ever done. Business travelers, it's the hotel of choice. Many nights during the week, there are no vacancies. But at the same time, I don't think the city should own the hotel forever. It's doing extremely well, as I mentioned, and it's paying down a couple million dollars a year in the bonded indebtedness. Plus, it's putting over a million dollars a year in what I call the R and M fund, which is repair and maintenance. The thing you're not going to have with that hotel is you're not going to see it go down in repair every year. Hundreds of thousands of dollars are spent on keeping it tidy. They just resurfaced, for example, all the bathtubs in the last few months, which I guess is something you do every five years in a hotel. So none of those things are being put off. But as soon as it makes sense, where the bonded indebtedness is low enough, I think the city should try to market the hotel, especially if it looks like there could be some buyers that would really want to own the hotel in Cedar Rapids.
Thank you, Scott. Sophia?
I would have to agree. I think that long term, the city just isn't in the business of owning and operating hotels forever. I think it makes the most sense for that to be in time of hand.
Thank you, Sophia. This one will go next to you. So with some of the urban flooding that has occurred in District Two, what kinds of thoughts and ideas do you propose about how to deal with stormwater flooding in District Two?
We have actually stood and watched chunks of the road wash past our home in a rainstorm. We've watched our neighbor to the rear bail out their basement with buckets. I think it's incredibly important that we look into ways to alleviate some of this flooding and alleviate some of the property impact that people are dealing with every time we have a heavy storm.
Urban flooding is an issue that affects a lot of the homeowners in District Two
and some of the districts around it, whether it be in Sophia's neighborhood or whether it be down closer to, say, Johnson School and in that particular area. And really, what's happened over time is we see greater frequency of larger rains. And the infrastructure was never built for that, and nor was it ever a problem in the past. But the city of Cedar Rapids has taken a significant leadership position. And one of the goals when I asked to be elected four years ago was to create a stiff topsoil rule, so when developers are building new homes in Cedar Rapids, like out towards where Sophia lives, that they have to maintain either four inches of topsoil or eight inches of compostable material. The state law was greatly weakened to where there are ways of getting around it, and I felt that was wrong because that topsoil absorbs rainwater. And the more rainwater you can keep on your residential site, the less that runs off, ultimately perhaps damages your neighbors or somebody downstream. And really, in the long run, it all ends up in the Cedar River untreated, or whatever is in it. And so the topsoil rule implemented nearly four years ago is part of that component. In addition to that, things like bioswells. I put in bioswells at our home about five years ago in the back, and they're fun to watch when they fill up with water and then it gradually goes down. But what I've also tried to do at home, and this is what I want to roll out to the city, is little changes that everybody can make as far as all of your water coming off the roof, coming down the downspouts, you can direct that instead of down the driveway into the street, you can direct that into your front yard or your backyard without putting it in your basement, and so that that water stays on site. And all of that will help lessen the torrent of water that gathers from all the various houses and then comes down and ends up in somebody's basement, or washes out part of a street or part of their yard. So I think that's extremely important and we'll keep making progress.
Thank you. And Scott, this next one, I'm providing a couple of questions. So it is in regards to homelessness and poverty. So what kinds of things might you propose to reduce the number of homeless adults and children in the community and to assist those citizens who do live in poverty?
Well, I think that's an important consideration, and it's a problem in Cedar Rapids as well as other places around the country. And I think the best thing in Cedar Rapids is, is we've been working on a number of things from the city perspective, funding the homeless shelter, the emergency homeless shelter, keeping city property such as the library open longer in the wintertime when that was going on. But I think it's a very complex problem, and it takes a combination of a lot of entities, a lot of nonprofits, such as the Willis-Dade Center. I had the tour of that a few months ago when it opened up, looking at the way they have restructured that whole building with also the veterans wing and things of that nature. I supported the Common Bond Project on the west side that has five units for formerly homeless people that were on their way back to not being homeless. But I think it's extremely important that all of the resources that are in the community that know more about it than the city of Cedar Rapids, the city is always happy to partner with any group to work on a hard problem. And I don't think there's any one thing one can do, but Councilman Todd with the Ambassador Program down in Green Square has helped significantly and with the folks that have been down there keeping in touch and seeing where resources can be had to help people better in that situation.
Thank you, Sophia.
As someone who experienced poverty somewhere else and then arrived in Cedar Rapids, not really knowing what to expect, I was really overwhelmed by what was available for our family in this community. Things like Boys and Girls Club, things like Splashpats, there weren't Splashpats where I lived previously when I lived there. The idea that there were free movies, my kids had a place to go and be entertained and feel like everyone else, it really helped them to, it helped to alleviate some of the stigma around poverty and it helped to eliminate some of the differences that you feel when you don't have access to some of the same things that all of the other kids do at your school or all of the other kids do that you know. Willis-Dade does incredible work. It's very exciting that they have their new building ribbon cutting coming, or has just happened, one of the two. Horizons has partnered to help provide rides to the shelter in the wintertime so that people without transportation can get there. I've been part of the Board of Family Promise, which does incredible work to keep transient families together so that you don't have to divide the mother from the father and decide, you know, if the children are going with the mother as well. Waypoint does great work. The community resources here do a really great job, and I think that the city does a great job of supporting that work as well.
Scott? Yep. You got that one. Sorry, I'm out of words here. So if you want to take this next one, talk a little bit about the three issues that you would like to address during your term if you were elected, your top three issues.
The top three issues for me here in Cedar Rapids are food insecurity, public health, and senior issues. These are things that I work in every day, things that I see every day. In terms of public health, I think about things like the built environment, where do we provide opportunities for people to be active? Where do we provide opportunities for people to access food or to access locations to grow food? In terms of senior issues, I think about adequate housing and affordable housing. And these are the issues that are really important to me because, like I said, I work in this every day. I see the environment that, that people are trying to I see the environment that, that people are trying to overcome some of these obstacles to stability and to success. And I think that there is a lot of opportunity there for us to, to help raise everyone.
Thank you, Scott.
In another four years, there's a number of things that I think are important to me in addition to things that I won't mention here. The Neighborhood Finance Corporation is just getting started, and it needs to make sure that it gains a solid foothold in Cedar Rapids. And we see in our core neighborhoods NFC playing its part in keeping those neighborhoods stable and providing a gateway for new families to move into those neighborhoods. The other thing that I've worked on and will continue to work on is we have a shortage of affordable housing in Cedar Rapids, and we're not alone, but we definitely have a shortage. We have a lot of people that are rent burdened. I just cut the ribbon on a new project down off of C Street Southwest. Thirty-six units, majority of them affordable in that category. And there, took the tour, lovely places. I mean, they're really nice. And it's a solid building, underground parking. We need more and more and more of those projects. The Common Bond project over on the west side a couple of years ago is the same way, just an incredible project. So the city of Cedar Rapids, and I can probably speak for all the council members, is on board to participate in any of those projects to bring more and more affordable housing online. The other thing we really have to focus on and continue to focus on are streets and infrastructure. I hear about it virtually every week. I'm meeting a person tomorrow, in fact, to talk about a street. We can't lay off of that, and if we can find additional money somehow to put into streets, we need to do it. And the last thing I just talked about a little bit more is I really want to take on to an even greater extent the urban flooding problem because I think it's something in Cedar Rapids and other places. It's not going away. It's going to be bad. It's going to continue to cause issues, and we need to do whatever we can to try to really work on that problem.
Thank you. Scott, the next questioner notes that sometimes driving with the bicycle lanes can be confusing, and they wonder if there is something that might be done to help it be less confusing.
I would agree with that. More than once, I've figured out that I wasn't doing something right that way. I think to some degree, it's been a little bit of a learning process with the bike lanes. And when you try to put in bike lanes in an already built environment that's been here for a long time, it's a whole different story than if you're putting in bike lanes in a brand-new street and a brand-new neighborhood. And so there's a lot of different techniques that Cedar Rapids has been trying. But I think the thing that we need to keep in mind is we have a goal of having a walkable, bikable community. The whole bike movement really is turning into an economic development movement, as you watch on the weekends especially, the hundreds and hundreds of bikers that are going around. But I think the city is very open to making adjustments to certain bike travel lanes and things of that nature. The city shouldn't move away from continuing the progress of making this a bikable community. And I think some of it, to a certain degree, is just kind of learning. I say that to myself every now and then, and I only, maybe I only need to hear it six times, and then I finally learn I shouldn't do it that way. But it's important to kind of be cognizant of it, and it's also important that the bikers follow the traffic laws. Nothing irritates me more is when a biker races through a stop sign as if it didn't exist. And I asked the police chief a little while ago, I said, "Do we write tickets for bikers that run lights?" And he says, "Yes, we do." And we have been writing some tickets, so I think that's important because the bikers also need to follow the laws. And I make sure I stop every time when there's a stop sign or a stop light, part of it for my own preservation. But as time goes by, I think the whole biking, or bikability in Cedar Rapids is going to become very common, and we're going to be used to how the bike lanes function.
Much like the bike lanes changed a lot of the patterns of driving here, I think a little bit about the Med Quarter. There were one-way streets that I grew very accustomed to in my time here. I'm tragically nearsighted, so I don't spend a lot of time reading, I can't read the street signs, so I just expect things to stay the way that they work so that I feel very comfortable in going where I need to go. So the Med Quarter really threw me too. But in addition to being an economic driver, this is also a health issue. We want to create more access for people to be using modes of transportation that employ the body and that are better for your overall well-being and health. So I support the trails, I support the bike paths, and we will all get through this together.
Sophia, let me take this next one first. So I'm going to start it by noting, do you support cities having control of issues versus state control since there have been occasions when the state legislature has indeed chosen to take local control away from local governments? Because another individual noted, would you be in support of the minimum wage being raised? And since that's not something that's allowed to local governments anymore, you might want to comment on that.
So a few years ago, I was part of the Minimum Wage Task Force that was put together by the county. I was also part of a group called Living Wage Linking that worked to raise the minimum wage. And when that, when that was successful, we were elated. Living on minimum wage is something that has been misconstrued, is something that only teenagers are making a minimum wage, or, you know, all of these other things that people think about that are just not accurate. And I think it's incredibly important for individuals to be able to make a living wage. If you are working forty hours a week, you shouldn't be not able to cover the light bill and your food for the month. You shouldn't be struggling to take care of your children and survive. So I support raising the minimum wage. When it comes to city-controlled issues versus state control, it's important for the city to have jurisdiction over certain things, unfortunately. And when it came to the county raising the minimum wage, it didn't stay that way, it was overruled. Another issue that comes to mind for me is the traffic cameras. I believe that also was an issue that, for a while, was being held up by what was going to happen at the state level. So these are complicated issues, but I would support a higher minimum wage, yes.
Well, I would agree.
For example, with the traffic cameras as an example, Sophia and I are on the same page as far as state control versus home rule. For many years, it was the tendency of the legislature to grant more and more autonomy to the cities and counties to make their own decisions on a variety of issues. And then in the last five or six years, it's kind of shifted back the other way, as you mentioned, the minimum wage, as well as the traffic camera thing, which I'm not confident that's totally dead at this point in time. Another thing, and this is not a hugely critical issue, but several years ago, is the fireworks. The legislature all of a sudden said, gee, in Cedar Rapids and other communities, we're going to allow you to legalize fireworks. And it happened at the very tail end of the legislative session, and unfortunately, cities like ours and others didn't have enough time to really study the issue because we really didn't know it was coming. But in my four years on the city, three and a half years on the city council, and all of us have combined, we never received anywhere close to as many emails and communications from citizens about the whole fireworks thing that first year. The state of Iowa should have allowed cities to continue to make that their own decision as well as counties. So I think the cities and the counties should be able to make their decisions on their local situation as they see fit, and the state should stay out of a lot of these issues.
Thank you. Scott, if you'll take this next one first. In regards to the proposed Cargill rail yard project in the Ram Pot area, could you tell us your perspective on whether or not you support that?
Well, it's an interesting story, and it came up in the last couple of months. Really, that issue for the council didn't matriculate until about July. And at first, I was strongly for it, and then when we got to the council meeting, we ended up basically, as a council, not in favor. It did not have a motion, so therefore it was a no at that point in time. It's a tough situation because Cargill is a great employer of Cedar Rapids. They employ roughly 300 people at the corn milling plant on Otis Road. They need a rail yard that is being driven by the decisions that the Union Pacific Railroad is pushing onto Cargill about how many rail cars they can store and where they can store them. So a solution has to come as to what Cargill does with its rail cars, because the last thing they want to do is to lose Cargill as a major employer in Cedar Rapids. They do have a plant that's sitting right on the Cedar River. It floods. They don't even take down the flood protection. They just leave it there all the time in case it comes into fruition again. We will, I think, see a proposal for the original location perhaps later this year, early next year. And as I do on virtually every issue, I reserve the right to collect the data and the information before I make a decision. But I will say, I am more predisposed to the original location than I was to the one that we dealt with a few weeks ago. But we'll see all the information, and since council wasn't involved in the first part of the first location, we'll take a close look at it.
Thank you, Sophia.
I think this was largely a public health issue as well as an issue related to the well-being homeowners. I think it's really important that we put the well-being of our citizens before the well-being of corporate interests, whether or not that corporate interest happens to be a large employer. I think that there are other options for them. We do have to have a solution, but hopefully not at the expense of the well-being of the people that are in it.
Thank you. And if you'll take this next question, how would you approach or what suggestions might you have in regards to some of the violence that has occurred in District Two?
So I think that the SET Task Force put together some good recommendations for this community. The work that was done there has really just begun. During the summer, they started the first round of grants dedicated to working toward a safe, equitable, and thriving community. We actually partnered on one of those to help provide meals to some young students who were engaged in one of those programs. It remains to be seen what will, what will come for the next round of funding, but I believe that that was absolutely the right move to take, to fund those initiatives, both at the county and at the city level. And it's, the safety issue is a really tricky issue. It's important that while we are dealing with some of these safety issues, that we are really mindful of, sometimes there can be a tendency to look for a scapegoat. And sometimes that impacts the wrong people.
Okay. Scott?
I would echo what Sophia said. I supported the SET Task Force, and as Councilman Todd said two days ago in a planning session, he feels very confident, he sits on the board, that the SET Task Force is moving in the right direction. And as a councilperson, I would fully support increased funding to the SET Task Force for additional creative innovations to work on this problem. The folks that are involved in that, just like other issues that are out there, are working extremely diligently on this problem. The other thing I would say, when we get into other things with violence, I listen very carefully, as do other council members, from Chief German on the number of guns that float around our community. And the chief continually says that a lot of the guns that are in possession either of you or others are stolen, and they shouldn't have them. And he gets very frustrated because the majority of them are stolen out of unlocked cars or unlocked homes, and they get into the wrong hands. Chief will always say, with violence, you can't arrest your way out of it. But I think with our various nonprofits that are working very hard and working together, we can make progress on this issue.
Great. Scott, could you talk a little bit about the city's role in economic development and how you think that might continue to be useful going forward?
The city of Cedar Rapids plays a key role in economic development. There are employees in the city that do nothing but work on economic development and have been very successful in doing so. In this day and age, cities cannot afford to not work on economic development because it's a very competitive world out there. We have to not only help and encourage our local companies to expand and build and try to help them with finding workforce, but we also need to work very hard to try to find outside entities that will come to Cedar Rapids. Cedar Rapids is very lucky. It has a fairly diversified portfolio of companies and organizations. And one of the things that I think is extremely important with continuing to push hard on economic development is you've got to grow your tax base. And if you don't grow your tax base, all the other problems and issues that you try to deal with are going to be just that much harder. And so cities around, whether it be Iowa or other places around the country that have not been able to benefit from economic development generally have a stagnant taxable valuation. Their property tax, which cities are funded mostly from in Iowa, goes down or doesn't go up and keep up with inflation. And so it's extremely important for Cedar Rapids to be in the game all the time, to attract companies and keep local companies here, as well as look for opportunities where we can expand our tax base so that we have the funding to do things in our city.
To that end, I've been watching a lot of new developments go up, and a lot of them are applying for tip. And I would really love to see some more specificity around what really defines a community good or a public good. As you stated, we have a huge need for more affordable housing, and we keep seeing more and more of these high-end housing developments taking shape across our skyline. In addition to attracting outside business, I also think that it's really important to address access to overcoming some of those barriers to entrepreneurship for some marginalized communities.
Thank you. And Sophia, this next one, the questioner is interested in things that might be done to promote more open, accessible, and transparent decisions for the city of Cedar Rapids.
I think, I can't say what this question is speaking to, but I think one thing that comes to mind for me when I hear the word transparency is, I really feel like after the New Bo Evolved Festival took place, there were a lot of people sort of scratching their heads and trying to figure out what had happened, why our local businesses and our vendors weren't going to be paid, how is the city different from this wing that was in charge of this event, and what it all meant for our community. I think a lot of people were not too happy about the letter that was sent out by a celebrity that took part in that and did not get paid or did not get paid in time and fashion, I can't recall which. I think it's really important that we are allowing people access to information about how some of these decisions are made so that we feel confident in the people who are representing us.
Thank you, Scott.
I think it's I think it's important to note whether it be Newbo Evolve, which was a very unfortunate situation that occurred, or whether it be Hawkeye Downs, or whether it be Orchestra Iowa, or any other entity that receives hotel motel tax, that they are not entities of the city of Cedar Rapids. The city of Cedar Rapids has no managerial capacity in any of those organizations, doesn't make any decisions, simply divvies out the, through council approval, the hotel motel tax. And as a result of that, there's not an issue of transparency with the city because the city is not involved in those organizations or the decisions that they make. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that in the long run, there will probably be other entities that may receive hotel motel tax or some other form of public money that might need to be reorganized, such as the entity in the building that we're sitting in right now. But it's important to note that the city of Cedar Rapids is not involved in the operation of these businesses, and therefore it's not an issue of transparency.
Great. Okay, they're all over the map, but we're not going to get too far on any of these. So let's just do a couple very quickly. Are you aware of any plans for a senior center?
It's my turn.
Scott, yes, it's your turn.
Okay. The senior center, prior to the flood of 2008, was downtown, called the Whitworth Center, funded through Lynn County. And I think the important thing with whether it be a senior center, and I'll expand upon it just a little bit, or other uses for youth, I think there needs to be some planning on how to take advantage of the facilities that we have throughout the city, whether it be the schools or other entities, to where, whether it be a senior center or other youth activities, we fully utilize those entities. I think as we're looking at our community, we need to have flexibility so that these entities can handle a variety of needs and not just a senior center by itself, or not just a youth center by itself. We look at the Northwest Neighborhood Rec Center that was built after the original one was destroyed by the flood in 2008. That is fully programmed, seven days a week. It's been an incredible success, and I think we can build on that success around the city to expand opportunities and create places for groups to recreate.
Sophia.
So I sit on a committee of people who have been working to continue pushing for a senior center in this community over time. Unfortunately, the center that was in the works when the flood hit was not able to be built. Everything changed when the flood happened, I think we all know that. But we do continue the work to bring to this community a senior center. We're the second-largest city in the state, and we need to address the needs of seniors in this community. There have been several challenges along the way. There are, you know, the Northwest Recreation Center is amazing. We do need a place with more parking. We do need a place that is specific to seniors and to senior needs. Some of the challenges that we've faced when thinking about more of an intergenerational center are issues of having small children in a space where seniors are attempting to navigate safely, and having dedicated space for specific activities that the people on the committee thought were incredibly important to continue. We hope to include access to healthcare within the facility. We hope to include access to other resources and nonprofit groups in the community that can help to serve the needs of the people who are attending. So the work does continue, and we are hopeful.
Thank you both very much. We do have more questions left, but sadly, we've begun to run out of time. And so I would now like to ask you to move on to your closing statements. Sophia, would you go first on this?
My experience in this community has been overwhelmingly positive. I don't think it could have happened had I not showed up here 14 years ago. Statistically, as someone who became a mother at 16 years old, it's almost impossible that I'm sitting in front of you today. I'm grateful to this place for what has taken place in our lives, and I hope to ensure that achieving the American dream, the way that my family has against all odds, remains possible for all people in this community. Thank you again to the League for having this event. Thank you all for coming. I'm honored to be sitting here, and I'm grateful and proud to live here in Cedar Rapids.
Thank you, Scott.
For my closing statement, I'm just going to tell a little bit of a story. I'd mentioned earlier during the session about creation of the Neighborhood Finance Corporation, and that was really the main reason I ran. And I got that done, and it was hard, getting people together. And any time in a two-and-a-half-year time period that this came together, it could have failed. But the long and the short of it is, we got it done, and it'll become a major resource for our older neighborhoods. But the one story that really touches me about NFC, I met a young man, Matt Morrison, 26-years-old, who did his financing through NFC. And Matt is an energetic young man working in Cedar Rapids, and he had a dream of owning a house at 26. But he couldn't afford $150,000 or $200,000 house, so he selected a house on Indiana Street Southwest that had been in foreclosure for about two years. Previous owners had eight dogs. There was actually a pond in the basement from the roof leaks. And he bought that house and through NFC was able to get the financing as well as the forgivable second loan. And within 30 to 45 days, he gutted the house. First of all, he cleaned it out. They needed hazmat suits in order to do that. And it is absolutely fabulous. It's about 900 square feet. He redid the whole place. His neighbors are thrilled because all of a sudden, one of them said, "Our house just went up $10,000 in value. Why are you taking this on?" It was a real mess. And this is the perfect type of situation that NFC solves. So going forward, I want to continue to create more situations like Matt. And I appreciate being here, and I thank the League, and I appreciate Sophia being here, and hope everybody votes in November.
Great. Well, I want to extend my thanks to the candidates for their participation in our democratic process. I'd also like to thank you for taking your time this evening and coming out and asking questions. I'd like to thank Legion Arts and CSPS for use of their space. And so if you haven't already thought about this, certainly I encourage you to vote. Absentee ballots are available soon. And please remember that in a wonderful effort to increase voter turnout, this November 5th, for the first time, you will be voting for both school board members and for city council members. So please join me in thanking both of our candidates. Thank you.